Good evening, everyone. Glad to have you all here. Let us bow his please in the word of prayer. Eternal God our Father, we thank you for your many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Thank you for life, health, and strength. Certainly, thank you for the city of Orangeburg. Continue to bless us and keep us. Make Orangeburg great, great, great. Give us the wisdom and knowledge how to lead, and we'll give your name the glory and honor in Jesus' name. Amen. Our first item of business, we want consideration of September 2nd, 2025 City Council minutes.
Mayor and council, I move for the adoption of the minutes.
Motion has been made by Councilman Kit.
Second motion.
Second by Councilman Kalu. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, the motion is carried. We have an appearance from Mr. Vincent Sanders, Fire Squad New School Year Initiative. Let's give these students a hand clap. Hold this, y'all.
As Barack Obama once said, "Change will not come if we wait for some other person or some other time." We are the ones we've been waiting for. We are the change that we seek. Good evening. My name is Zion Goldsmith, and I'm honored to serve as the President of the Tri-County Commission on Alcohol, Drug Abuse and Fire Squad Youth Coalition, which stands for Fearless Individuals Reaching Excellence. We are excited to be back here once again. Our mission this year is simple: education, awareness, and impact. Our theme this year is unfinished flame. We are not done feeling leadership, ambition, momentum, and energy. But while we are the change, we also know that real change takes a community. Like the powerful change you created by passing the vape shop ordinance in April of 2025, we thank you for standing with us and helping keep our flame burning. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Leila Sumter, a senior member of the Fire Squad Youth Coalition. Although our many efforts in Fire Squad have been proven to be successful in the community, youth substance abuse is still very prevalent. On average, about 23.1% of students in grades 9 through 12 reported drinking alcohol in the past month. Nearly 14% of kids aged 12 to 17 used illicit drugs in 2021. Also, based on our own local data that we've collected in the community, from about 700 respondents, 80% of them indicated that vaping is still a problem amongst youth, and 76% has indicated that marijuana is still a problem. As Mr. Goldsmith stated, we know that real change takes a community. So yes, we have made progress, but there is still a lot to be accomplished regarding youth substance prevention.
Hello, distinguished members of the Orangeburg City Council. My name is PJ Hubbard, and I am a junior member of the Fire Squad Youth Coalition. Our initiatives can be split into three distinct realms: prevention, recreation, and education/awareness. Each type of community initiative has its own unique impact on our youth. Prevention initiatives like prevention nights at high school football and basketball games impact the youth by giving a fun and engaging view of drug prevention. Recreation initiatives like book clubs and community engagement activities allow for education in a palatable and interesting setting. Finally, education and awareness initiatives inform both youth and adults about the dangers of drug use. These initiatives are also expanding every year with our plans of community cleanups, podcasts for awareness, and even more community engagement activities. These activities are integral to the development of Fire Squad each year. Continue to watch and even support, and visit us each year.
Good evening. I am Rihanna Coleman, senior member of Fire Squad, and I am here to help progress a safer, healthier community for our generation. We come before you to ask not just for your support, but for your presence, because we cannot do this alone. When our city leaders show up, it sends a powerful message that our community believes in prevention and our youth leadership. We are creating safe spaces for all young people. Please consider partnering with us, attending our events, sharing our messages, and helping us reach more of our peers. Your support can truly make a difference.
Good evening. My name is Jordan Frazier, and I am honored to serve as your 2025-2026 Fire Squad Youth Coalition Vice President. On behalf of our coalition, I thank you for your support and your listening ear that you've given us over the past year. That support has been the foundation of the progress we have made. But let this partnership be more than words. Show up for us, stand with us, and help us turn our vision into action. We cannot afford for our outreach to become one-sided. Real progress happens when support flows both ways, when our efforts as youth are matched by your presence and your commitment as our leaders. Our mission is clear. We want to prevent drug and alcohol abuse and create lasting change. But that change cannot happen in isolation. As members of our city council, your influence in policy, your voices in our churches, your presence in our schools, your leadership in the community can carry Fire Squad's message further than we can alone. When you show up, when you bring our mission into the spaces that you work in, you strengthen us and you multiply the impact of our work. Together, we can plant seeds of prevention and nurture them into a future that reflects strength, health, and the potential of our youth. Again, we thank you. With your influence and support, the seeds we plant today will become the future that our youth deserve tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank y'all so much.
I have a question for them, or first a comment. Thank you all for coming to City Council and sharing this message today. I encourage you, if you have a calendar of events, to share it with City Council. I think if you drop that information off with our city clerk, Ms. McDaniel, she would be happy to share that with all members of City Council. And I am happy to support you all. Thank you for the work that you're doing.
And what, all of you from the same school?
No, ma'am.
I didn't think so. So what school, where?
We're composed of kids from three different counties, from three different areas in the tri-county of Orangeburg, Bamberg, and Calhoun. So me, I'm from Orangeburg-Wilkinson. We have kids from high school for helper professions, Bamberg, Airheart High School, Edisto High School. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, good. That's what I thought. Okay. We certainly appreciate your coming. And do come back to visit us. But we will be more than proud to help you, assist you in what you are doing. We'd love to see young people taking the lead out there. We will be willing to help. So please come back to see us.
Thank you.
And get those dates to us early.
We'll have Mr. Vincent, our advisor, to send that to the county clerk.
Thank you. All right.
Now, that's the principal son there. His mom is the principal of W.
Yeah.
With Goldsmith. And my granddaughter right there.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
He certainly appreciates.
Wonderful.
We have a presentation today from the MASC field representative, Ms. Desiree. Now, Desiree, I can't say your name.
That's fine, all right, Mayor, Desiree Fragoso. What a tough act to follow. I mean, that was just absolutely wonderful. Very impressed with all of you. Very well spoken. Encouraged to see a younger generation speak up. Like the mayor indicated, my name is Desiree Fragoso. And first, I'd like to introduce myself. I am the new field service manager with the municipal association. So I cover what we call the South Coastal Territory, all the way from Aiken to Beaufort County. I know you're all very familiar with what the association does. It's part of the reason why I'm here. But I wanted to put a face to the name. I started with the association in January of this year. For the past 10 years, I've been this, I was the city administrator for the city of Isla Palms. And I've had an opportunity to work with the mayor. Both served on the board of directors for the municipal association for the last two years, and it has just been a joy to work with you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I am here just to, one, introduce myself and also share with you all a plaque recognizing the council at the city of Orangeburg for all of you all completing the Municipal Elected Officials Institute. Only 14 communities received this honor this year. I think it's something you all should be very proud of. It really highlights the commitment that you all have to serving your community, deepening your understanding of municipal governance, and, you know, just helping serve your communities better. So I commend you for that. Hopefully, you all keep it up. If you have new members coming up in future years. But it's something that, again, I just want to highlight. I think you all should be very proud of, and speaks very highly of your commitment.
Yeah, thank you.
So present this to the mayor.
Y'all give us another hand.
Mr. Evans, I have number three. Good evening, Mayor and council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I would like to just echo what Ms. Fragoso said about those young people are so impressed by your intelligence and articulation of your initiative. So thank you all for being here. Very much appreciate it. Mayor, before I get started, if I might, I'd like to take a moment of personal privilege on behalf of all city employees. We want to thank Councilman Strowman for his years of service to the city. I can tell you from a personal standpoint, nine out of the 10 times that Councilman Strowman called me, he was always calling me so we could assist someone else, so we could help someone else, so we could help his constituents. And I think that speaks volumes about his level of service to the city of Orangeburg, to his community, and to his constituents. We will certainly miss your statesmanship and your service and presence. We see what political vitriol can cause. We see the division in our nation and in our community. But Councilman Strowman always stood above and could disagree without being disagreeable. And I think that's a great way to model for our youth and for our community. And so, Councilman Strowman, I certainly want to thank you. You always ask about my family, my boys and my wife. That means the world to me. You were able to sell my grandmother a car she doesn't even drive. So again, on behalf of all city employees, thank you, thank you, thank you. You certainly left extremely large shoes to fill. Thank you so much. So for your consideration, Mayor and council, is third reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 5 Police Regulations of the City Code by adding Section 5-31 Hate Intimidation. Again, for your, as a reminder, the hate ordinance was originally passed by, Richland County was the first county in the state of South Carolina. The state of South Carolina is one of only two states in the nation that currently does not have a hate crime legislation. The county of Orangeburg then subsequently passed their ordinance about a month ago. And this would be third reading with the opportunity for you all to pass a hate crime ordinance for the city of Orangeburg. Again, as a reminder, this would make any, let me, I want to make sure I read the, if anyone in whole or in part causes the fear of harm, injury, or damage to the victim's person or property because of the victim's actual perceived race, ethnicity, national origin, color, religion, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, or physical or mental disability, whether or not the perception is correct, a person will be found guilty of violating this ordinance. It's a misdemeanor with up to $500 fine or 30 days imprisonment. Happy to answer any questions.
Given the situations that occurred last week, do political affiliations fall under this hate crime ordinance at all? Or would that be something separate?
When you say political affiliations, if someone is harmed because of their political, I'm just looking. It doesn't spell that out. It doesn't specify political affiliation. If that's something y'all want to add, I don't know if that would pass legal muster, but perhaps. Do we need to research it, or you think that would?
I mean, I would appreciate the opportunity to look into that. If that's something the council would seek to add, if you would like to propose an amendment to that this evening, that's another option. But to get some control and press, we'd be back on the fly when I might be able to.
Let's ask him to research it.
Okay, so you want to just kind of hold off on third reading until?
Make sure you got the right wording.
Yes, sir.
In terms of holding off on this third reading, there was something that Attorney General said, Bundy, that free speech is different from hate speech. Now, what is free speech, and what is hate speech?
Well, free speech will fall under the First Amendment. You know, I don't know if I have a total definition in front of me. John Marshall, do you have one in front of you that, I mean, I could?
Give me a second, I'll pull one up. But effectively, what I understand that the Attorney General was referring to are things that are illegal even within the context of the First Amendment. So incitements to violence, threatening harms to one another. So making overt threats to cause physical concrete harm to someone, that's not protected by the First Amendment. As far as the particular federal law that she was referring to, or whether she articulated it correctly, I can't speak for the Attorney General on that point. But to the extent that there is a distinction in federal law between protected speech, the classic example is crime fire in a crowded theater. That's not protected speech because it could cause everyone to run out of the theater and someone to be injured trying to escape if there's not actually a fire. So there are certain kinds of speech that are not protected generally. As far as hate speech, I'm not aware of any particular distinction on that other than those incitements to violence potentially in federal law.
Yeah, because it's still confusing. Because I may say something that may be construed to be a hate speech, even though it's a free speech that is within the law. But then some people may take it out of context to say it's a hate speech. That's where I'm just kind of confused. Because if we have to pass this ordinance on a hate speech, we need to really, you know, make the narrative so that everything will be within, you know, within the law.
Are we able to table the third reading?
Council, when you can move to postpone, either to a date certain or to the next meeting. If you move to table and you fail to take it off the table at the next meeting, then the ordinance would die. So if you're going to make a motion, I would request a recommendation, a motion postponed.
Well, can we adopt it and then come back and make the amendment? Amendments?
Mr. Mayor, you certainly can adopt an ordinance and later move to amend the ordinance, but then that would be three readings of the.
I mean, I've already done amendments.
I'd really like for it to stay on the book. Yes.
I think the motion would be to move the third reading to the next meeting. That would give him time to research, you know, how question.
Always do an update.
Yeah.
Always.
We can move, let's move to the next meeting. And let's remember to come back and always come back with the. No, no, we can't do that. Because we got to move to the next meeting, because we got some language we got to put in.
Put in.
Yeah, we can't come up. So we need to put in the language. So somebody make a motion to?
I move that we postpone the third reading of the ordinance amending Chapter 5 Police Regulations of the City Code by adding Section 5-31 Hate Intimidation until the next city council meeting, which is scheduled for October.
I think it's the sixth, December 6th.
First meeting in October.
Seven, okay.
Okay. Motion has been made by Councilman Grievous.
Second.
Second by Councilman Knotts, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, the motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. The next item on the agenda for your consideration is an ordinance amending the city's business license ordinance to update the class schedule and providing for other related matters. Just as a reminder, this is an update that is required by law every two years. The municipal association puts out this update, and we're asked to adopt it. Just some highlights, there are not many changes that would affect the city. But just wanted to highlight a few. Mining is currently a Class 2 and will be upgraded to a Class 3, which is a higher rate. But there are no mining, really no mining facilities in the city. Manufacturing is a Class 9.8, and it's changed to a Class 3, which is a higher rate. Transportation and warehousing is Class 1. It's changed to a Class 2, which is a higher rate. Real estate and rental leasing is currently a Class 7 and is changing to Class 6, so that's a lower rate. Professional, scientific, and technical services is changing from a Class 4, I'm sorry, from a Class 5 to a Class 4, which is a lower rate. Healthcare and social assistance is changing from 4 to 3, a lower rate. So those are really the only changes. Again, this is required that the city updates the business license ordinance every two years, by no later than December 31st of this year.
Okay. Are there any discussions on this ordinance before I read it?
So this will take effect for the licenses that are acquired in March of 2026, correct?
Yes.
And have we done any sort of assessment in terms of how this might affect the budget that was just passed?
Yeah, I don't, we have it, but I don't think there's going to be much effect at all because the changes are so minimal in terms of the changes that actually affect businesses that are located in the city.
Any more discussion? Ordinance 2025 amended the city's business license ordinance to update the class schedule and providing for other related matters.
Mayor and council, I move for the adoption of the amending, the ordinance number 2025, amended the city's business license ordinance to update the class schedule and providing for other related matters.
Motion has been made by Councilman Kit.
Second motion for the first reading.
Second by Councilman Kalu. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion is carried.
Thank you, Mayor and council. The next item, if with your permission, I'm going to ask Ms. Betty Baker, our airport manager, to join me and allow her to share some exciting news with you all about the airport.
We're so glad to have you, Betty.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
I wanted to take a moment and thank Mr. Strowman for his dedicated backing of the airport throughout the years and all the things that he's done for us there. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
The airport had applied for two grants this year and received both. The first one is an airport infrastructure grant, and this is to do rehabilitation on runway 1735. That grant was for $948,647. We also received a grant for Airport Improvement Program, and that is also for the rehab of runway 1735. In that grant, we received $4,388,494. The total of the grants that we received With the city, with that amount, the city would have to do a total match of $140,045. The, this year, the grant is funded 95% by the FAA, and the city would only have to come up with 2.5%. And the state will do 2.5%.
That's great.
Yeah. Do y'all have any questions? Congratulations.
Well, Betty, congratulations. Want to see our airport move forward. Thank you very much.
Mayor, I just want to thank Ms. Betty and her team at the airport for all that they do. They've done a tremendous job in getting grants and moving forward with the renovations of the airport. Those matching funds, we do have money set aside from the capital project sales tax that will help cover those matching funds. So again, thank you, Betty. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Resolution improving one or more United States Department of Transportation grants related to the city airport improvements and providing for other related matters. Would you like to entertain a motion, please?
I make a motion, we accept it.
Motion has been made by Councilman Strowman.
Second motion.
Second by Councilman Hannah. Hannah, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, the motion is carried. Let's give our airport a big hand again. That is super duper duper. Thank you, Betty, for all you do. Before we go in, get ready to go into executive session, I just want to take personal privilege on behalf of the council to thank Mr. Strowman for all that he has done in working with this council. And I have a special love for Mr. Strowman because he talked me into running for mayor. We walked, we used to walk every day, me and him and four or five more gentlemen, and all of them died but me and Mr. Strowman. So I said, we're going to quit walking. But I appreciate him for talking, talking me into running. In 2007, I wasn't ready. But they came back in 2013, and they just, they just got on me so bad. So I decided to do it, and I'm here, I am. But, Mr. Strowman, we appreciate you. And this is not the end of the story. You will always be with us, and we thank you. We appreciate your effort because we know they were all honest and pure. And nobody like you. Ain't nobody like you. You can make us laugh. Nobody like you. And we thank you so much. 16 years he's been holding you down.
We just wanted to say to you, Mr. Strowman, we knew you before you even got on council. You've been, always been the same way. And we just enjoy having you here. So we thank you so very much for the participation you've given us and all the comments. We just enjoy. Sometimes we agree, and sometimes we didn't. But we go out as friends. So we thank you for that. We appreciate it.
I'd just like to thank God and the people that supported me for the last 16 years. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. Good, good.
Mr. Richard, I always call him Councilman Strowman. You know my voice on the telephone. I know his voice on the telephone. He would call, I would call, and he would tell your story. But one thing about him, I trust his integrity. That's what I trust about him, his integrity. He is, he'll tell you, man, na, 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 na. The story that he is an honest guy and want to be honest. You know what Councilman Strowman is gonna vote before he vote. If he's gonna stick to his horse, he, ah, and he, I enjoyed, um, conversing with him, working with him, even having meals with him. An amazing man. Call out military school, isn't it? You can tell his inner spirit. He's, he's strong and he'll continue to be strong and we wish you more and more fishing days ahead. But come and fish with us because there's enough fish in the sea.
Thank you, Mr. Strowman, for your, um, contributions to city council. I've only been, I'm the newbie right now and somebody's going to take that place, but, um, I thank you for always calling, checking on me, my daughter, the snacks, and you did not sell anyone in my family a car, but you do have a connection with my mother through Maxwell Air Force Base. So I thank you, um, and your presence will truly be missed on city council.
Uh, Mr. Strowman. I really appreciate, you know, for this number of years I've been in the council. This is my second time. And, uh, also I appreciate knowing that, you know, your daughter is in the medical field and so we always talk about your daughter and, um, everything else. I appreciate, uh, you know, your recommendations. Uh, the only thing that, um, I didn't, just like she said, Annette said, is that you did not send me any, any car. Even though I knew when you were working on that, um, you know, car lot. But, uh, the, the, the fact is that you're a gentleman. You know, you stand on your own point and they don't let to be, you know, uh, moved to and fro. You stick to your point and that makes, makes you a gentleman, not wavering on points. Uh, you represented your district well and the city of Orangeburg. I know you take the, the people in mind, the, the city of Orangeburg, especially our workers in the city. You try to help everybody, you know, so we will miss you and also your wisdom. So stay close and, um, I know I will not be seeing your wife for, for a while because when we go to meetings, I always go to her. I say, that's my sister, you know, so we like to talk. But, uh, the fact is that you've been part of this crew and I will wish you the best. Keep riding on. Thank you.
And you my brother.
Yes.
Mr. Strowman, um, thank you so much for the service that you provided, um, here on council. And I want to personally thank you for the opportunity to tell you thank you for the times when, um, I was under the weather or whatever. But the next day, if I wasn't at council the night before, you would call me, but you know, you got to think about time and retired folk sleeping. But I still appreciate you calling. And checking on me, so enjoy the rest of your tenure and I know that God has something for you to do. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Let's give Mr. Strowman another hand. Matters pertaining to Department of Public Utilities.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if you allow me, I can't let all this great stuff be said about Mr. Strowman without adding my two cents.
Go ahead.
Uh, two things I will remember about him. One, his, uh, what Sidney said, when he called, it was always about his constituency. Uh, he was always, uh, interested in helping those in his community. And I will add, it didn't have to be someone in his district. He was always calling to help folks. And two, when he was gonna vote against something that we proposed, he would call me and tell me, and I appreciate that. Uh, when he was gonna support it, he would call me and tell me. So as, uh, Mr. Hannah said, you were never at a loss for what he was gonna do and I appreciate that from you as well. Thank you, sir, for your service.
Yeah. All right. There's no matters concerning, um, Department of Public Utilities, but we're getting ready to go into executive session and we have item number five, discussion of negotiation of incident to propose contractual arrangement, propose sale or purchase of property, the receipt of legal advice, any other matters covered by attorney-client privilege, South Carolina Code, Section Thirty dash four seventy A two. Uh, joke farm, farm, Stevenson Auto Lease Agreement, sale of property. Item number six, receipt of legal advice, South Carolina Code, Section Thirty-four seventy A two, political science and petitions. Item number seven, discuss and negotiation of incidents to propose contractual agreements or receipt of legal advice, South Carolina Code, Thirty dash four dash seven A two, Duke Energy of South Carolina. And we will be coming back to open session. So we want to thank y'all tonight for coming, especially those students and our visitors. We really appreciate y'all for being here. Do come again and have, we'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I think motion adjourned.
Most been. Most been made by, go into the executive session, I'm sorry. Uh, motion been made by Councilman Strowman.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kalu, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion is carried. We're gonna ask the council to stand, still the students want a picture with us. Good night, everybody.
That's good.
We would like to entertain the motion and go back into open session.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Hannah, second by Councilman Strum, in all in favor.
Aye.
As have the motion is carried.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you. You have in your agenda an item to give authorization to the DPU manager to sign an amended contract for firm capacity and energy between the City of Orangeburg and Duke Energy, Carolina. If you recall, on our last meeting, you approved an agreement between Duke and the City of Orangeburg Department of Public Utilities. And this is part and parcel to that agreement. It actually amends the contract for our firm capacity and extends some benefits that are currently received by the City of Orangeburg Department of Public Utilities in that current contract. It just extends those benefits through the life of the contract, and we would ask that you give me authorization at this time to sign that agreement.
Are there any discussion for Mr. Harley? If not, we would like to entertain the motion.
Mayor and council, we'd like to move that we give the authorization to DPU manager to sign amended contract for firm capacity and energy between the City of Orangeburg and Duke Energy, Carolina, LLC.
Motion has been made by Councilman Kit.
Second motion.
Second by Councilmen Hannah, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed, as have the motion is carried.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Avery.
Thank you, Mayor and council. In accordance with the disclaimer on our agenda that council may elect to return to open session and vote on any matters discussed in executive session, a matter of the sale of property was discussed in executive session, and I'm asking for your authorization to enter into an engagement with a realtor to sell certain city property.
We would like to entertain a motion, please, for this said item.
I move that we entertain this resolution or approve this resolution, adopt this resolution.
Yes, give him authority.
Authority, giving him authority to sell property.
Motion has been made by Councilman Grievous.
Second.
Second by Councilman Notts, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed, as have the motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
We would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move by your man.
Motion been made by Councilman Kalu.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kit, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed, as have the motion is carried.